All right. Good evening. Good evening, good evening. The regular meeting of the KCPS Board of Directors for June 23rd, 2021 is now called to order. So sincere apologies. Thank you guys for being patient. It is certainly not my habit of running late and starting late. So but sometimes things take longer than we anticipate. So I apologize and appreciate you guys all being patient and welcome. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah.
Present.
Ms. Buckner?
Here.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Ford?
Present.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Mr. Hogan? Here. Thank you, June. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some moved.
All right. It's been moved in second. June, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan? Yes. The agenda is approved. All right. Well, we will start the evening. We've got a full evening of fun for you guys. And we'll start the evening with public comments. And I understand we've got quite a few people. So I appreciate you guys being here and sharing your perspectives with us. We'll start with Jason Roberts with AFT. And Mr. Roberts, you have three minutes. Welcome, sir.
My name is Jason Roberts. And as you heard last month, I was elected the new president of the Kansas City Federation of Teachers and School Related Personnel Local 691. Prior to this election, I was a social studies teacher for grades seven, eight, nine, 11, and 12 at Central High School. And I was the founder of the credit recovery program at Central before I transferred to Northeast Middle School, where I taught seventh grade, geography, and economics. The last two years, I was the lead educator for the Missouri Option Program, taking our students who are overage and undercredit on the verge of dropping out and helping them to achieve their high school diploma. I'm exceptionally proud of the rebuilding and rebranding program that happened under my leadership. And I do believe that the program is set up for excellent success. During the pandemic, we graduated 52 students who would not have graduated otherwise. In 2013, I was elected the vice president of membership for our federation under the leadership of Andrea Flinders. I was reelected in 2015, 2017, and 2019. I served on the teacher evaluation committee, the code of conduct committee, the health insurance committee, the negotiating team since 2012. I have also represented our federation and this district in Jefferson City on the Governor's Commission for Education, the Department of Education's Professional Development Committee, and the Special Legislative Committee on Career and Technical Education in high schools. I believe that labor and management must be companions on the journey. That was my motto when I ran for president. Companions on the journey. This causes us to work in full collaboration with each other to ensure the absolute best education possible for the children of Kansas City Public Schools. But let us not forget that teachers' working conditions are indeed students' learning conditions. You cannot have success in one sector without the other. And this does require labor and management to find common ground to ensure quality working conditions and thus learning conditions for our students. It is most unfortunate to report so early in my term that morale in our district is at an all time low. Having come to the district immediately following the rightsizing under Dr. John Covington, I have seen low morale. However, I have to say, I believe we can change this. We have work to do, but we can do it together. We can build a quality education system for our students and ensure that our educational staff retain their positions of employment in our district. After all, we know there's not a long line of teachers waiting to bust down the doors to work here. However, we can change that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. You're at three minutes. All right. For our next public comment, welcome to the podium, Mr. Melvin Brown. Hello, Mr. Brown. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Hogan, to Dr. Bedell, to all members of our board, our deputy superintendents and other superintendents, and everyone in their respective places. I am pleased to say that I have served this great school district of KCPS for several years. In fact, I started the same year when our superintendent started as the Family and Community Engagement Specialist at Paseo Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. It was up until lately when I was informed that I could no longer serve in my capacity due to budgetary issues. And I just simply wanted to stand before you on tonight to just give you a few things on the things that I've done with your support throughout the years, such as reinventing our school newsletter, also hosted several events. I hosted and maintained relationships with our community and business partners. Also, throughout the drought towards the end of the school year, one particular time, we had Arts on the Hill, Spring Arts Festival, and there was no money left in the bank. So therefore, reached out to our partner from the New Era Missionary Baptist Association and obtained a large charitable amount of $1,500, which was able to fund that particular event. Also, in a way of keeping our alumni involved with the current school, I had hosted and organized our annual Paseo Alumni Barbecue and our old school basketball game, of which Superintendent Bedell assisted Lincoln to get the win last year. In addition to that, while maintaining a robust community connection, new partnerships were formed across the city. Also, I initiated Parent Ambassadors and Alumni Ambassadors Program at Paseo Academy. And it was through the recommendation of former KCPS employee Samara Crawford Herrera that I, along with Dr. Bedell, were featured on KSHB Fox 4 Action News, highlighting the district's focus to improve parental involvement in our schools. So many things have gone on, and I do wish to bore you with so many details. But I just want to simply stand before you on tonight to say that not only am I KCPS made from the time when I kicked my first football at Murray-Harmon Week's playground to the time when I walked across the stage to receive my diploma at Paseo Academy. I would like to thank our superintendent for his support. Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Thank you, Dr. Darryl Davis, Dr. Lori Jackson. To my new friend, Dr. Ford, I want to say I had a conversation with her at the bus stop at 31st and Indiana. And I said to her, "Dr. Bedell needs someone who's going to work with him and not against him. And therefore, if you are a part of that team, then you will do fine." I want to say that this is not goodbye to KCPS. It will be see you later. For I do hope that someday, soon and very soon, I do hope to be snatched by some other school in our district. Thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right. At this time, we will call up Ms. Tiara Trotter Graves. And I apologize if it's Tiara and not Tiara.
I find it's Tiara.
Tiara, perfect. Welcome to the podium, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, everybody. I am Tiara Trotter Graves, as he announced. I am on the DACX team. And I'm also the chairman of Paseo Academy SAC. I've been doing SAC with them for three and a half years. I'm gladly going to be continuing for my fourth year. I love Paseo. I just have a lot of major concerns that have like changed our whole school. And I tried to get understanding all year long, and I'm still not getting any understanding. 2019, 2020 year, we lost 11 good teachers administration. One really that kind of gets to me that I don't understand is our arts coordinator. We are a performing arts academy school. So therefore, I don't understand why we do not have an arts coordinator. Then we lost some really great principals. Mr. Green, them are not there anymore. Mr. Peacock is no longer there. This year, we again lost a great number of great, excellent, Mr. Melvin is one, excellent administrators and people that help and have outside connections that help us. I'm not understanding what's going on. We've also then tried to talk, communication. The communication level is not, to me, it's not acceptable. I've been downed as a parent when it comes to that, to the new principal and how things are going. I have other parents who are concerned and who have said things. We have taken minutes down for our SAC meetings. We ask for them because there is a lot of stuff that needs to be listened to and heard in these SAC meetings. And there has been a lot of disrespect in these recordings. We ask for them. We can't get them. I'm starting to get a little overwhelmed with it. Like I said, I love our school, but I think there's a lot of things going on that needs to be checked into. And we're getting a lot of our teachers and administration that we need. We actually need these people. These people have been there before I was there. Again, third, almost fourth year. Can I please have you guys look more into this? Help us that we're losing people that we need. I'm getting like, I don't know, outrageous number of different parents that have had different things to say. And then I know it's not just me, but at one point, I did kind of get silent. At the beginning of school year, when problems were coming and coming, I did kind of leave it alone. But then it started up again. The smart comments to the parents, to the other staff, to fights being going on in the school. Kids are not getting suspended, not getting on probation. Things have changed at Paseo Academy that we're not happy or satisfied with. And I'd rather for the school to go back the way it was when we first came than to be a neighborhood school. So I'm sorry, but that was what I wanted to speak about.
Thank you, Ms. Trotter Graves.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll welcome Ms. Jan Parks to the podium. Ms. Parks, welcome. And you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bedell and members of the school board. I am Jan Parks. I'm co-chair of the Metro Organization for Racial and Economic Equities Education Task Force. Several years ago, our task force voted to focus on the issue of elementary school suspensions. We researched the issue and finding that several states and cities across the U.S. had banned suspensions, we moved forward with our proposal to KCPS. We have appreciated the district's cooperation as we have moved forward. Tonight, I would like to talk with you about the impact of suspension on families. Suspensions cause a great deal of stress on families, including frustration, guilt, and shame. Parents who have been active at their child's school may pull back, feeling like everyone is aware that their child is bad. It can also cause social issues with other children in the family. If both parents work, arranging supervision for the suspended child can be a challenge. Many students who have been suspended carry feelings of inferiority into adulthood. They may also feel alienated from school, especially if they have been suspended more than once. The Moore Square Education Task Force asks for your support for a ban on suspensions K through 5. This is a bold move. But keeping children in school with resources in place to help children and their families have a positive education experience is vital. It will also be imperative that accurate data is collected and shared. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parks. All right. This time, we'll invite Mr. Ron Carter from Moore Square to the podium. Moore Square is well represented tonight. Hello, Mr. Carter. Welcome, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. Again, my name is Ron Carter, and I'm the other co-chair of the Education Task Force of Moore Square. And as Jan said, we've been working with the previous board and this board on addressing the issue of school suspensions. This evening, you will be voting on the recommendation that, starting with the 22, 23 school year, the district adopts a policy to ban suspensions through fifth, K through fifth grade, except in cases of conduct that is against violent, where they may harm themselves or someone else. I've been here before and told you why Moore Square supports the recommendation. You've had the information. You've done the research, and you saw the presentation that Dr. Woodley put together. The district website states the purpose of Kansas City Public Schools is to provide a quality education that prepares all of our students, regardless of background or circumstances, for success in college, career, and life. We will produce scholars who are high achieving critical thinkers, prepared to succeed in a constantly changing world, and engaged in the improvement of their communities. Without a doubt, banning suspensions of students K through fifth is a positive step that will promote success for our students, enabling the district to produce scholars who are high achieving critical thinkers, prepared to succeed in a constantly changing world, and engaging in the improvement of the communities. So tonight, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for listening to our concerns, meeting with us all those multiple times, and making this happen. Thank you to Dr. Woodley and her team for putting together a comprehensive plan that will positively benefit the district's students. Moore Square will continue to advocate for policies that we feel benefit all the students of the district and look forward to continuing our relationship with the board. So again, Mr. Hogan, Dr. Bedell, Dr. Woodley, board and staff, thank you for the work that you did on this endeavor. We urge you to approve the recommendation to ban suspensions K through fifth grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and thank you for helping us get back on schedule as well. At this time, we'll invite Reverend Carmen Williams to the podium. Hi, Reverend Williams. Welcome, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you. To the board persons and to the chairperson and Superintendent Bedell, I just want to say thank you for inviting us. And I'm kind of nervous. It's my first time before you. I am a member of the Moore Square Educational Team. And likewise, I'd like to speak in regards to the recommendation that we not have suspensions for children grades K through five. Like many students across this nation, Kansas City Public Schools, students have been inside their school, inside their homes for almost a year. After such a long period of school absence and a lack of classroom protocol, removing students from schools due to behavior and discipline is worse than a long absence caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Added to the travesty to students who may have suffered psychologically from positive social interaction with their peers, the suspension of schools of students in grades level K through five and even to grades five or six plays a tremendous strain on parents and guardians who now have to return to their environments and work environments outside of homes. Further, it has been noted by Jasmine Johnson, a writer with the Kansas City Community Voice newspaper, that students who are suspended, who don't have access to counseling services, are more likely to drop out of school and enter the juvenile criminal justice system. This phenomenon is an impetus of a larger trend referred to as the school-to-prison pipeline. Also important for any student, but especially for African-American elementary school students, is consistent, visible, and viable cultural representation that validates their home environments. It is important because students benefit and learn better from educators who look like them. Therefore, we strongly suggest that educators continuously receive the following trainings and instructions before suspensions: trauma-informed care, conflict resolution, restorative justice practices. When conflicts arise between students and staff, tangible resources to restore healthy, healthy community environments and resolve ensuing issues become imperative to the educational successes of our students and school personnel, which is the goal of parents and teachers. I thank you for your consideration in this matter, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Reverend Williams. All right. At this time, we will call Ms. Tangenay Butler. And I hope I, did I, no, not even close. Do it for me.
Tangenay.
Tangenay. Oh, okay. All right. We'll take it as a win anyway.
Yes, that was definitely a win.
Welcome to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Tangenay Butler. I'm a former student of the Kansas City School District, and also I'm a mom of a four-year-old boy who currently attends Kansas City School District. And I'm here today to discuss why suspension bans should be approved. I wholeheartedly believe that suspension ban will create a different school experience and environment than what I had myself and what my peers had. But before I talk about what environment that would create, I do want to quickly talk about the impact that suspension has on students. While in school, I witnessed a lot of students being suspended. It was rarely an occasion where students were suspended once. And that suspension magically taught that student about themselves and came back to school and made behavior change. Suspension does not change behavior. Suspension does not change behaviors, for people in the back. Those students continue to be suspended, and I label them as bad. And just imagine what other people label them as. Suspension does not serve the student, the parent, the teacher, the classroom, the district, the community. Instead, suspension leads to more suspensions, academic deterioration and disconnection, strained relationship with the teachers, the parent, and the children. Students not feeling heard, wanted, or supported, which trickle down to not feeling heard, wanted, and supported in adulthood. But just imagine, just imagine if we can switch the quick fix of suspension and focus on the longer term, utilizing intervention that creates an environment for our children that can thrive. I know I can speak for everyone here. We all want our kids to thrive. Banning suspension will create an improved and resilient school experience that I wish I had in school. And I leap at this opportunity to stand in front of you because this is possible for the next generation. My son and his peers can possibly have a learning environment where teachers are trained, equipped, and empathetic, that interventions are culturally competent to fit students' needs, a trauma-informed environment for all staff and faculty, strong sense of relationships with parents and teachers and children, individualized intervention, and diversified workforce by making sure educators are aware of implicit biases. This is the environment I want my son to learn in. This is the environment where learning and growth occur, a space that allows mistakes to be learning lessons, that launches academic growth, where we can feel heard and feel wanted and supported. And this is the environment that Malik and his peers deserve to have. I do thank you guys for your time. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Tangenay Butler. Appreciate it. All right. Well, last but not least, we'll welcome back to the podium, Mr. Tom Love. Mr. Love, long time no see. Welcome back. You'll have three minutes, sir.
It's good to be here. I'd like to invite the teacher union president to listen in carefully because I'm going to talk about a couple of things that the teachers need to be involved in in the district, particularly the kindergarten teachers. The kindergarten teachers know what's happening with the kindergarten students. And we have been promoting children illegally in the district. We were taking children that were four years old and putting them in kindergarten. It's only allowed in Kansas City and St. Louis. Population's over 300,000. I used to be a state rep, just to let you guys give a little background. So we changed, our Dr. Bedell, I guess, you guys have changed that. So we're not going to be putting the August birthday students in. When Dr. Green was here, we stopped the September. And that seems like such a short period of time. But for those children, that's a year. And let me tell you, that is absolutely huge. And those kindergarten teachers know who's ready. Under the law, they're supposed to, if they didn't complete kindergarten, Mr. Thornton, if they didn't complete kindergarten, they are required to stay in kindergarten. Period. We have 98 students that were put in that are in the in-between thing right now. And I sure would like to have the board make sure that those 98 children actually successfully completed kindergarten, and we don't put them in first grade to fail. Now, what happens with these students that are failing? They start causing trouble in second grade. They're not able to read. And that's the students that are causing trouble. That's the prison to pipeline, pipeline to prison. Third grade reading scores, we had 30% of the students that were at first grade level or below going into fourth grade, breaking a law that was passed 19 years ago that required them to receive a minimum of 70 hours of tutoring. St. Louis is doing the same thing. I went to the state and talked to the Assistant Commissioner of Education. There was eight pages of zeros, not $1 requested for St. Louis. He did that. He said, "Give me two months." I spent nine months of school board meetings trying to get that to happen. We need, we need to have literacy labs and Title I funds that the teachers, the teachers have a right, and the parents have a right under the state rules and regulations under Title I to request it. It's not even asked the Title I meetings I went to to have a reading specialist. $100,000 will provide a world-class literacy labs in all these, in an elementary school, $100,000. There's over $100,000 in these 25, well, 22 Title I schools, K through second grade children's money. They get over 600 bucks a month, I mean, a year each. And you add it up, they all have the funds. We have been breaking the law, rules and regulations in Title I, stripping these children of, they could have received 500 hours of tutoring if they went to a school in Johnson County, if they were, if they had dyslexia or whatever. 20% of the students need help every day for three years. 500 hours, we were getting zero when I started. St. Louis, last year, it was zero.
All right, Mr. Love, you're beyond three minutes.
So get it, take care of it, guys. Take care, Mr. President.
Have a good night. Okay, we'll move on and transition into the board of directors report. And we'll start off with our board treasurer, Mr. Manny Abarkah IV, with our treasurer's report.
Thanks. All right. Wonderful. Well, as Linda reminds us, this, at this point in the time of a budget year, it's kind of boring. As things kind of wind down, we begin to start a new fiscal year. So keep that in mind. Looking at our local revenues, obviously, our local revenues is our largest line coming in. Our local current and delinquent property taxes remain behind budget as we should be fully collected at this point. However, 7.5 million is still pending due to 2019 state appeals. Do we have any update on when the state appeals are going to be resolved?
There are hearings this week for the first round.
Interesting. Do we have all of our 18 appeals?
From the State Tax Commission, yes, not 19.
So just back for those from Moore Squares who are here as well, 7.5 million is still missing from this 2019 tax collection time period. And these are large corporations mostly appealing them. Total local funds is on track for budget, other than the 7.5 million in local property taxes. Looking at our county, state, and federal slides here on five and six, we are on track for county and state revenues in total. Federal revenues show that there is 17.8 million remaining to budget, which we expect with final expenditures. And funding requests this budget is expected to be met. Looking at our overall pie chart, again, just showing you that our local revenues is the largest line of revenue coming in, and then the subsequent federal lines are the secondary largest pots. So looking at slide eight, our salaries and benefits expenditures information showing that we are on track to hit this budget. It's current year payroll pays out in mid-August for the majority of our staff. Looking at slide nine and 10 here, both are various lines and purchase services. We were several places that we expect to spend under budget. A good example of this is purchased instructional services on line 6311, showing 3.2 million under budget as of May 31st, and line 6328, contract substitutes at only 47% of the budget and 1 million below budget, obviously due to the pandemic and us not being fully staffed in person. Slide 11 here, under supplies, the slide again shows that we are under budget on a variety of lines. In the case of 6412 technology supply lines, these devices were ordered in July, and we did not receive, recently received, or we did recently receive a large shipment. So this should come in closer to budget. However, we will see unused supply budgets as the end of the year, as in due to months of being at home versus in buildings. Looking at our expenditures, by type shows us that 65% of our total expenditures are in salary and benefits, which is to be expected as we see this slide every which is to be expected as we see this slide every month here. Looking at slides 14 and 15, it delineates our maturities to align to payroll dates throughout the year. This is the large sums that we get in the first half of our budget year being invested so that at the end of the fiscal year, we have the remaining amount of money to pay for payroll. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll give it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Abarka, any questions from the board? No? Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll move into ad hoc committee reports, and we'll start with Ms. Wolfsee with Government Relations Committee.
I don't really have an update today. You know, we'll have two projects coming up in front of the city council this week, but aside from that, we're kind of quiet.
Sounds good, thank you, Ms. Wolfsee. All right, we'll move over to the Finance and Audit Committee with our Chair, Ms. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. The Finance Committee has been focused in three areas over the last few months, one of which is coming to the board, actually, a number of which are coming to the board this evening for approval. The first item is the budget. There has been a great, and I would call it an iterative dialogue, that's happened through the course of this past four or five months with Ms. Quinley and her team and the Finance Committee, so that, you know, I believe that the budget that's coming to the board for approval tonight has kind of taken the steps in response to that dialogue. I think it's been a very positive process, and I think my committee colleagues would likely agree with that. The second is that we, in our previous meeting, went through in pretty deep detail the process that the administration undertook to receive and evaluate the audit proposals. Very thorough, very detailed, walked through it with the committee to help us understand the audit contract that's on the consent agenda tonight. And I really, again, want to thank Ms. Quinley and her team for walking us through that process. It's a very, it's a very deep process. And the third thing that we will be kind of working on as we go into the next year is how we can, and I would encourage our friends who are here tonight and those who are listening and those who may watch this when they're having trouble sleeping some night, to give us some feedback about how we can fully engage with our community in dialogue around the budget preceding our hearing in May. So, we're really talking about some touchpoints that we can have through the course of the academic year, leading up to the prioritization and the process. Those responsibilities really sit with the administration, but I think from a board perspective, we want to make sure that we engage the community in a way and at a time that allows them to have some voice in the process so that as the superintendent sets his priorities and works with his team, we have some of that voice available and in the process. So, we'll be engaging in some public work on that front, and we'll spend our meetings this summer talking about how and when we might be able to do that in coordination with all of the other initiatives that are going on across the district.
Awesome, thank you, Ms. Cortez, any questions from the board for Ms. Cortez? No? Okay, I will take exception to your lack of enthusiasm around the excitement of these meetings, though. So, anyway, with that being said, we'll move on to Ms. Buckner for an update for the Communications and Community Engagement Committee.
So, in May, we had a regrounding of our outcomes and our strategies through the mandate that was set in the committee before this current committee. And some of the strategies include systemic and continuous public engagement to gather input related to decision-making by the school district, deepening and strengthening board relationships with stakeholders, and ensuring accurate information regarding KCPS board, district, and schools is readily available and easily accessible to all stakeholders. So, with that, in the May meeting, we talked about opportunities for this committee, and those include accessibility, board engagement with the community, civic and business engagement with the district, input and feedback, and then also aligning our committee meetings with policy monitoring meetings. And so, that led to two things. One was changing the time from 8:00, 8:30 to 5:30 on the Thursdays, and then the structuring of these committee meetings. So, in a nutshell, it includes, again, aligning with the monitoring schedule. So, for an example of this would be if in August, we are talking about, let me see the example that I've had here, social and emotional supports or child nutrition services. That would be an opportunity for the committee to invite community members in to speak specifically to those things, right? And then, I think the latter part of the meeting, we talked about debriefing with DEC and amongst committee members, just to ensure that we are coming into, coming into the policy monitoring meetings with, you know, very specific questions, questions informed by community input, and just an additional lens to move our decisions. I would love to hear feedback from the full board on this, and I just think that it would be a great opportunity for us to gather additional voices, namely from DEC and the business and civic community.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner, questions from the board? Ms. Wolfsee.
A clarifying question, so I think I understand what you're trying to do, which is if we have a monitoring committee, I'm sorry, a monitoring report in a month, the month prior, maybe even two months prior, what you're saying is in CCE, you would attempt to try and get like kind of a broad, public, civic, business, parent. It's almost as if you're going to, I assume you're going to communicate, this is the sort of input we're looking for for the meeting, you know, two months later, in that CCE meeting. Is that what I understand?
Absolutely.
Okay, and the idea there is to attempt to inform our board meeting that will come up the following couple of months?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, I think the alignment component is unique and I think very interesting to consider having that information before we come in front of the cabinet and ask our own questions, right? My question lies around how will you work with administration not to create scenarios where there may be conflict between the administration and the board of which the nature and circumstance cannot be shared with the public, right? I mean, whether these are HR personnel issues or student-specific, I guess, issues that pertain to some level of privacy there. I think that's my gravest concern, is that we create a scenario where we have to only listen, which is sometimes very challenging for us on the dais, and we can't truly share everything because of the nature of some of these circumstances. So, how will we work to make sure it doesn't become a dumping ground to some extent for some of these more complex issues?
So, I think our responsibility as board members is to listen, so this is exactly what it is, right? It is an opportunity for us to listen and to gather input. And I think part, and I can let you all see the actual structure, at the beginning of these meetings, I have a mandate grounding, right? So, we're re-grounding ourselves in the purpose of the meetings and ensuring that folks know this is an opportunity for the board to listen to you.
So, let me, I think we want to go, based on our conversation last week, I think we want to even go a step further in terms of those communications are bidirectional. Whereas here, you know, it's weird, right? The public comes in, and it's important, and there's reasons why we do it, right? If you just open it up and say, hey, this is an open-ended public comment session, depending on the night, we could be here for hours, right? And so, we, you know, really restrict it to three minutes, and it's a unidirectional sort of communication, but it's still valuable because we do take those things away and think about them and have conversations with administration and amongst us as board members. But this, what we're talking about here, allows for that bidirectional communication, right? And so, if you have these slots and you're inviting the community in to talk about a future policy monitoring topic, then it wouldn't just be the community coming in and having their say, it would be also us probing, right? Trying to understand, get additional clarity from it, and then using that to inform a future meeting and what sort of information the public is actually saying they want to hear about in that sort of meeting. One thing that I think, because I, so I like this. One of the things I think we need to kind of continue to think through a bit is there's policy, board policy specific to DEC and SAC and the role that they play and making sure that as we develop, you know, continue to sort of flesh this out and wrap structure around it, how are we making sure that the committee, DEC, SAC, and administration are all working in concert? And I know we talked about some of that, and I know we're still working through it. But I think, I think this is a good starting point for us to talk about how we go engage differently and increase our ability to go do this, have a conversation with the public, right? Versus the public talking at us. I don't know if you have any?
No, I do, we did discuss a kind of an outline on the who, the what, and the how. I will name eight to 10-minute slides of, and ideally, and this is just what my vision is for it, but ideally, the board would be seeking out community members that they've heard from or, you know, or things that they see in the community that have, you know, been on the radar. So, again, like you named, the bidirectional and eight-to-10-minute slide to have these conversations, and then a debrief with DEC, with committee members to ensure that we are walking away with some solid questions or some resolves to take to the full board.
Mr. Abarka?
One thing I was going to ask is that maybe you consider adding unions into that. I was somewhat disappointed tonight in just knowing and realizing that the unions only have three minutes to give us a report and an update, and this may be an opportunity to give them the recognition as a stakeholder group that we probably should, would do in some capacity broader than just the three-minute public comment section.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, I think this could be really helpful once it's fleshed out. I think I'm looking forward to seeing like the flow of it and how it will work. I also wonder, are we still going to maintain the one-hour meeting time, or is that going to be expanded? And then, just thinking about our other committees that we also have that I would imagine public would be interested in. Like, is this something that we would see bleeding over into those, or will we restrict it? Like, and if so, on which grounds will we restrict it? So, I just think it's a lot for us to really think about, so I'm glad we're having the conversation.
Mine is the Finance Committee. Okay, any, any other questions, comments? No, okay. Thank you, Ms. Buckner. All right, now that we're through the Board of Directors' report, Dr. Bedell, we will transition over to you with the Superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, we have a number of items to cover. The first one being the video highlight. We wanted to share with the board and the community our graduation recap over at Arrowhead Stadium. So, if we can go ahead and get that video on, thank you.
So, how do you celebrate a senior class that experienced an historic interruption to their education? Well, you have them create their own history at their graduation. The KCPS class of 2021 did make history as the first high school students ever to have their commencement ceremonies at Arrowhead Stadium. In two days, on the Chiefs' 50-yard line, more than 1,000 seniors from Paseo, Southeast, Lincoln, Middle College, Central, Northeast, and East gave speeches, performed songs, and strutted across the stage to collect their diplomas. Family and friends were able to cheer on their graduates in Arrowhead Stadium, and for those who couldn't attend, they could watch online. Ironically, the same way many students attended most of their classes the last 13 months of their high school education. But thanks to great planning, great commitment, and great partnerships, the seniors were able to do something other classes did throughout KCPS history. Graduate together with their classmates, friends, and families for a special night to celebrate it, all of their accomplishments.
All right, well, thank you, our communication team, for putting that together. This next portion under Superintendent's report is around some special recognitions. This past year was an unprecedented year that every school system in the United States had to navigate through and pretty much around the world. And we talk a lot about a lot of casualties that happened, that occurred in public education as a result of how difficult it was to navigate through the pandemic. And I think a lot of us are still seeing the impact of that around this country. You look at just what's happening from a legislative standpoint, you know, around because a superintendent made a decision to bring kids back or to not bring kids back. Nobody was in an optimal position based on where people landed on this issue. And I think as a school district, we're very fortunate that we've had the support of our board, we've had the support of our workforce, we've had the support of our community. We did not have things to blow up on us in the way that you may have observed happening around the area or even around the country. But in order for us to have been able to do what we've done, it took some leaders within central office that often don't get recognized. When the final product is done and people are seeing who presents or who's speaking to the media, it's generally Mark Bedell. But there are a lot of other people that had to go in and do the groundwork, and we have our executive team staff, and many of them have presented, and they are the ones that kind of carry this work. But we have a lot of our leaders in the organization that are over major divisions that sometimes get overlooked. And I think that it's important today that we recognize them, and I'm going to ask each of them to come up. Cabinet has come together, and we've put some thank you cards, and we've given you a token of appreciation for all of your hard work. And we want to bring you up now to just make sure that we're publicly acknowledging all of the hard work that you've done to help us navigate through. Lauren Grimes, come on up, Lauren has been wonderful. And I could tell you, Lauren will be the first to admit that she was not comfortable having to speak in front of large groups of people when this first started. But this pandemic forced her to have to step up, and I'm like, hey, you have to lead us through this. You have to, you have to be the voice around what's happening with our nursing and what's happening with testing. And so, I want to give this to you, and I ask that you stay up here so we can get a picture in. But I want to thank you because you've grown beyond belief with this pandemic, and I think we all can agree to that. So, thank you. And then Sarah's not here, but Sarah Williams is, basically, we coined her as the COVID compliance officer. And all of these meetings that we had, and I don't think people understand, there were times where we met three days a week where we were just going through. times where we met three days a week where we were just going through every, every intricacy of the system, and it was many times where she would say, no, you can't do that. I'm like, but I'm the superintendent, why can't we do that? But she held us accountable to adhering to CDC guidelines, making sure that every decision we made was in the best interest of protecting students, but also protecting the adults in our organization, because if we don't have a healthy workforce, we don't have people who can educate our kids. And so I do want to thank Sarah for what she's done, and I want to pass this over to you, Dr. Collier, to, to take on, on her behalf.
Sarah is on vacation this week.
Right, well deserved, and I think many other people will be heading out. Lizelle Ofield, if you can come up. Lizelle is over our, over our custodial services. So, all of the models that you all have seen around how the classrooms were set up, the distancing, the shield guards, the shield guards that were in here, that was all them. And that became a model. That got shared with superintendents around the country. We took pictures of our schools early on, and then that got shared with the Council for Great City Schools. It got shared with a lot of people, and there were districts that hadn't even thought about some of these things that took that model and were able to implement what we were doing. So I want to thank you for what you've done to ensure that we have clean and orderly buildings here in, in alignment with CDC. David Anson, David Anson is currently the lead in our IT department. And just everything that we had to do to ensure that Microsoft Teams, Zoom, everything for the board meetings, making sure that everything was set up, making sure that we knew how to let people into the system who didn't need to get in, how we had to take and make sure that we had privacy protections and all of those things for kids, that stuff was done, you know, with David Anson and Joe Phillips when he was here. Those two led our organization through this. The laptops, the hotspots, everything that we were able to do to try to level the playing field for our kids was done through IT. So I want to thank you. And last but not least, Jordan Gordon. We served over 1 point. We served over 1.3 million meals to our families throughout that pandemic. And, and Jordan, through his innovative mindset, said, we got to figure out how to take it to the community. So he worked on creating an initiative called Meals on Wheels. Meals on the Bus. All right. All right, Meals on the Bus. I know, I was like, Meals on Wheels, that sounds familiar. But Meals on the Bus, where we took our food services employees and we put them on school buses, and we moved food throughout the entirety of the city so that kids at their regular areas where they, within a block from their homes could walk, and they could get their food, and it covered breakfast, lunch, dinner, and it covered it for multiple days. And that innovation was something that received a lot of positive publicity. So these leaders here, we have to congratulate all of them together for what they've done, and we'd like to take a picture, Mr. Chair, if you're okay with that, for our social media platform. Thank you all. now is just a quick update on, on student vaccinations and where we are with that. I think as we look at what's happening around the country, that's an area that, that has become a bigger concern with students contracting the virus, and I know that we have a plan, and just wanted you to kind of update the board and the community on where we are.
Well, unfortunately, we were supposed to have Central, sorry, Children's Mercy Hospital this week, Tuesday through Friday, at the high schools. Unfortunately, Monday morning, zero parents had signed up. So they canceled the clinics. They will not be at the school. The bad news is, Tuesday, parents started calling. So, I mean, you know, we can't, Children's Mercy can't send a team out if they don't know anybody's going to be there, and I don't know how to get parents to sign up quicker, but unfortunately, that is my update. So I'm still going to work with the Health Department on seeing if we can, you know, I mean, we're, we're going to be at Summer Fest to do immunizations, and we can do the COVID vaccine there, but I'm hoping we can get something set up sooner than that, so I'll be working on that.
I, I just had a question. I know there are a few open walk-in clinics around town. Do you all refer those parents to those?
If anybody asks, we do. We have a, a list of, of where you can get the vaccine. I think, you know, we're at that point now where the people who want the vaccine but aren't getting it is because it just, it's just not convenient for what they're doing or where they're at. And that's what we were trying to do, is bring that convenience. So I'm, I'm still hopeful that we can, something, unfortunately, we can't reschedule based on the three-week window. It just didn't work with their schedule to get it in before summer school ended.
Mr. Barker.
Are there opportunities, and maybe this is Dr. Bedell's question more, or Linda, to offer incentives for students to get this done, to parents? I mean, because I feel like this is a critical component, that a small investment now may yield a positive impact in the future, so we don't have to put up our shields and distance and, because Missouri, we've got some problems all around. So I'm just wondering if there are opportunities with, with some unique funding source, maybe some new money we just found, anything that we can do here to encourage? Because this is, this is disheartening and I'm sure disappointing for all the work that you and your team have done.
Yes.
Unfortunately, the S R funds don't allow any incentives of any kind for anyone, so it would be an operating budget item, but we've actually had an internal conversation about giving some gift cards to students and families for participation out of the enterprise fund, which is some money that it has a little more flexibility.
Can I ask a follow-up? Maybe as, not necessarily to those specific funds, but perhaps appealing to the county, to the city who also got some of these dollars that have a little more flexibility in the way they're spending it, right? Because I feel like that possibility could have a broader impact on the city as a whole versus just going into our pockets.
Absolutely.
Ms. Grimes.
Just going to follow up on Mr. Barker's comment. This might be a great opportu, damn button. This might be a great opportunity to reach out to the folks in the corporate community who express an interest in supporting us and helping us. It'd be a great place that they could be our partners to create some of those incentives. I'd be happy to help.
Ms. Grimes, anything else?
No, any other questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. The next update, and I have Darryl here, I may not need him. You can come up to the podium, but I'm, I'm just going to provide the board with a, with a, well, actually, you have all your stuff here. Come on up, man. I was trying to save you. I was going to just do it, but go ahead.
All right, good evening, Board Chair Hogan, Superintendent Bedell, and members of the board, so, all right, we're going to make this, right, right. We're going to make this quick. So we're just three days into summer school, and we are serving quite a few happy children who are engaged in learning. We're serving a little short of 2,700 students as of day three. We do have some plans to make additional calls to bring some students in. There was some communication that went out, unfortunately, to some families stating they did not have a seat, though we do have a seat for them, so we're going to bring those families in. This stems from the conversion that we're doing with our student information system. And so, you know, it takes a lot of time to do the data integration and the, the training, just the timing of one semester ending and, and converting over to the new SIS. Did create some challenges, however, again, students are in and they're being served, and, and staff are working really hard this week. So I don't necessarily want to hit all of those, but our staffing is looking pretty good. That was one of our larger challenges leading up to summer school. We're now only maybe about several vacancies at one particular school. We will likely be able to shift some staff from another site to cover that with our assessment. We did our pre-test this week. They have until Friday to administer that, and there was a lot of support on, under the monitoring. We had our 12-month principals, as well as ample number of central office staff members that have been in every site this week, providing additional logistical support, as well as just conducting instructional walkthroughs and being in support to the separate school principals. So we'll come back at the end of summer with a more thorough report at the end of the five-week term. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Ms. Cortez.
So I think more than one of us heard from some of those families who got caught in the transition, particularly those coming from outside the district into the district. Is there someone or someplace they should contact if they're still interested?
Yes.
I don't know if we, do we still have that data to reach back out to them, or do they need to reach out to us?
So we did have some challenges with students coming out of the district that did not have student numbers, and again, it was a part of the, the conversion that, that didn't allow for that process to occur the way it normally would in previous summers where we've served all students in our boundaries. Instructions have gone out to all schools now as to how to assign those students student numbers and to enroll them. In fact, today, Major Brooks from Admissions and his team went out to different schools and trained secretaries on how to do that, and so we're now at the process. Many of them are now in, but those others, I've seen emails today where they're still trying to get out-of-district students in, but we now have the capability to do so. So if there is a family who enrolled before the May 24 deadline, they could now contact our admissions office or contact the school, and we do have someone who could serve them. Again, if they did enroll before May 24th, those are the families that we're trying to get back in to fill up the remaining seats that we have.
Okay, great, because a few of them had asked, and I don't want to get in the middle, but want to guide them in the right direction.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, and then as we move into superintendent announcement, let me just pull this up real quick. I want to make this a quick statement because it's important that we do our part as we've always done as a school district. At KCPS, we want to make sure that we're taking time to acknowledge and celebrate Pride Month during this month of June, as we take time to celebrate Black History Month and Hispanic Month, we speak up about social injustices and equitable outcomes for our students and what we want to see happen in this community in addition to acknowledging anti-Asian discrimination recently. We must also take time to celebrate and acknowledge the LGBTQ community in our continued push for equal rights. I have always said that in this school district, all means all. That is our position. We serve all, and we will serve all in a fair and equitable manner, and we will recognize all in a fair and equitable manner. So I just want to make sure that that is mentioned before we conclude the month of June. And then the last item that I have is to, this one is, is tough for me because Dr. Shepherd was one of the first people that I have recruited when I received this job in 2016. And at that time, her daughter was a senior in high school, and she said, I, I'm not going to be able to come this year, and didn't know that the opportunity represented itself for her to come in. She is a well-accomplished educator from the ranks of being a teacher, teaching math and science at the secondary level, to a phenomenal high school principal, a former Principal of the Year for the Houston Independent School District, which is really hard to get in a district that large. You have to be doing things well, and she took over one of the more difficult schools in that district at Yates High School, which if anybody knows, that's in Third Ward, across the street from Texas Southern University. That's a, that was a tough neighborhood, and she went in that school, and she turned it around, and I remember being at that time in an assistant superintendent role, and I was just amazed. I already had saw her body of work at the middle school, but I was amazed with what she did at Yates in a short period of time. She cares about kids, she pushes, and at the end of the day, as a school district, we're better because of what she's been able to do. We have infrastructure now that we did not have before, instructionally. We have a curriculum that's viable, that's been vetted. We have a theory of action around how we will conduct teaching and learning. We have universal screeners that allow for us to figure out where our kids are and how we can help respond. We have a CTE instructional framework that also has a theory of action. We built out our advanced placement program over the last three years to where now we are starting to roll in every single one of our secondary schools. And all of these things have contributed to net pluses in every academic indicator being measured by the state of Missouri, in addition to the KPIs that are being measured by the Council for Great City Schools. We are no longer at the very bottom in the state of Missouri, and neither are we when you measure us against other urban school districts across the country when you look at those key performance indicators. So while I'm, I'm sad that she's resigning, there are going to be massive opportunities for Dr. Shepherd to continue her journey as an educator, and I want her to come up and to offer a few remarks, you know, as our outgoing deputy superintendent, and then I'll come back and close out my remarks.
Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, Dr. Bedell, and members of the board and the community. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for the four years that I have had here. It has been an absolute pleasure to do this work. This is my life's work. There is no job that is too hard as long as kids are involved, and I will go anywhere at any time and do any work that I feel like can benefit the work of children and the student achievement. And so I thank you for approving all of those things. I know I've brought things to you since I first got here. I always had some requests, always needed some program, always needed something, and I want to thank you for your support in this process, because without the support of the board, we would not be able to do some of the work that we've been able to do. I'm very proud. I told the team today, I have worked myself out of a job. When you are a leader, when you are a leader, if the people who are behind you cannot take your place and move forward with that work, then you have not led well. And so I look at all of them, and I know that they are ready to go. They can do this work without me, and, you know, the curriculum team today, we had a wonderful day with our gear up conference today and yesterday, and listening to that work and listening to the feedback that our teachers had was absolutely phenomenal. They are a phenomenal group of people, so I am honored. The honor has been all mine, and I thank you so much for the privilege to be able to serve these last four years.
So you, you know you're not getting out of here without some comments from me, right? Look, Dr. Shepherd, so nobody, and I mean nobody, who's ever worked with you can question your commitment to these kids, right? And the reason you push is because you feel like they deserve it, right? They deserve the best and the most from every single one of us, and you're, you're 100% spot on, right? They do. And we should work ourselves to death for these kids, because if we don't do it, who will? We, we know what's going on nationally around, you know, public education, particularly urban public education, not to mention what's going on here in our state, as attacks come from every corner of this state against our kids. And so I'm a better person for knowing you, and you and I have had some real conversations, right? We have, and one of the things I've always respected about you is you can have a real conversation and walk away and still pour yourself into the work that you're doing on behalf of our kids. So thank you for this. You'll, you'll go somewhere and do something, um, just as great as what you've done here. Thank you for your contribution to this community. Um, we appreciate you.
So Dr. Shepherd, um, you know, the, the team will, will be looking to get together with you next week for certain, so we'll work with Sandra on that, on that celebration. And, and tomorrow, uh, to our community, we will put out our, uh, communication on who will be replacing Dr. Shepherd. That will go out tomorrow. And then, um, as we continue to work over the next couple of weeks, there'll be some reorganizations, reorganizing that will, will happen with the executive level, uh, chart, and we'll make sure that, that gets posted and, and gets shared with the board and everybody else around, um, the new structure that we will have in place. But we're looking forward to building on, um, a lot of the work that you and your team have put together and continuing with, with your assistant superintendents and, uh, your curriculum and professional and development team. Uh, we're excited about what the future holds for us, so thank you again. That concludes my remarks. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Well, we'll move into regular business items, and you want to kick us off with the first one?
Absolutely. At this time, the administration wa, is requesting approval of the FY21 Comprehensive Budget Amendment Two, uh, in the amount of $294,693,514. And for this agenda item, business item, we'll pass it over to Ms. Erin Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. And she also did the equity funding tier model.
Yes.
You didn't put that in there. I just want to make sure you recognize for that, for our budget. Uh, uh, we're asking that the final budget of the year, uh, be approved for $294,693,514. This includes revenue increase of $4,665,090. The majority of that you would see in your budget book on page eight and nine. It gives you the detail. But it was mostly the federal funding that we got for COVID. Uh, we also decreased our expenditures by $6.4 million, and that was mostly because of the under-budget. We, we were under-budget because of the pandemic. We decreased the student transportation budget. We decreased legal services budget, and we decreased substitute services budget. So we, uh, had our savings of $6.4 million in expenditures. This allowed us to put a, a million into, 1.1 million into our reserves for estimated reserve balance of $52,555,279, which is 26% of reserves. So we're requesting that approval of the budget, final budget, and the transfer of $7.7 million for our capital funds for next year.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? No? Okay, thank you, Ms. Thompson. Uh, is there a, a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve Budget Amendment Number Two to the FY2021 Comprehensive Budget?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second of June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. Thank you. It's approved. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is an item that is no stranger to our board, the approval of the FY22 Comprehensive Budget in the amount of $300,664,404. For this business item, I pass it over to Ms. Linda Quinley.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Chair Hogan and board members and public. This has been a journey. As Ms. Cortez said earlier, we've been working on this collaboratively and collectively with our finance committee and with you, with our community and our internal stakeholders for many months now, so we're well-prepared. Uh, you have had a document for the last couple of weeks that is the final document. You do have two paper-clipped sections to replace in your book. It's simply typos and little changes like that, no content changes, no number changes. Um, but if those are there for you to take home and put into the book that you were given a couple of weeks ago for review. So very quickly, we wanted to just give you a summary, because we have presented so many times to you. This is a really shortened version of our budget timeline. You can see it starts in January. So it is a nearly six-month process to get to this point, and here we are, meeting the statutory deadline of final approval prior to June 30th, should you choose to do so in a few minutes. Just a reminder, and we won't read them, that, um, the superintendent each year thoughtfully considers what should be the primary goals of the budget. We share those as early as January, February with you, so that we have the opportunity to have feedback both from the board and the public on what those goals are. And you'll find them riddled throughout this budget. Each of those were addressed in some manner as we worked through this budget together. Really important piece of information is student enrollment, and it drives everything in a school budget. It drives our revenue streams, and it drives our allocations. It drives the tiered mo, model that Dr. Shepherd created for us, and drives staffing, and it drives supports for students. So we always want to share this data. Another really important component, as you know, 82% of our total operating revenue is local, coming, of course, is, comes from the current property taxes, uh, and lesser percentage from proposition sales tax, and lesser from delinquent property taxes. These are our three primary lines of revenue, so they are the drivers of this budget. This is a very quick summary. You've seen before, but as an important component, one of the assumptions we have to make is we have to talk about what our tax levy will be. For us, that's different and unique than every other system in the state of Missouri. We won't go into that tonight, because it's a great, fabulous, long conversation. But the, one of the reasons we want to show you this comparison to our peers locally and across the state is you'll notice in that column that says debt service. KCPS is the only system with no debt service levy. And this relates to the fact that it was the late 1960s when a successful geo-bond passed in the system. So therefore, we do not have access to those kinds of revenues to support debt. So that $4.9599 cent of local tax levy covers everything we're able to do in the system. Assess valuation is that other key component. You'll see in the far-right column here, we do have an increase expected in assess valuation. This is a reassessment year. It's a small net assess valuation increase of 3.25%. All of that increase coming from residential, as agricultural and commercial properties are expected to decline in value on the final reassessment. And then we are asking you this evening to look at a total budget with $294 million in revenues, and that is all funds, and expenditures that total $300 million in revenues. So we are asking for roughly $5.5 million of deficit spend or spend into those higher balances we have in capital, and roughly $1 million of spend into the operating reserves. This leaves us with over 27% in reserves projected at the end of next year, which is very much, um, inside our comfort zone for reserve balances. With that, we would take questions.
Any questions for Ms. Quinley? Ms. Cortez?
So I'm asking you this question because you're up before the Code of Conduct discussion.
Okay.
Okay? I just want to, since it's not in the, this thing does not like me. Just making my point. Um, it, since it's not in the superintendent's notes, and it would be difficult for anybody looking at this document to kind of connect the dots, I just want us to confirm that the, the funding it will take to successfully implement the proposed changes in the Code of Conduct are included in this budget for the work that's going to be done in the, the next academic year.
Absolutely. My colleague, Ms., uh, Dr. Woodley is, you know, she's sort of a dog on a bone when it comes to this, so we did not leave that out, um, in a good way. Uh, so as you look into Tab Four, which is the financial, financial section of the document, you find that represented in two places. On page 61, 62, where you see social workers, you see an increase of four social workers coming into the system. And then on page 63, 64, an increase of 2.2 guidance counselors to get to that goal of a guidance counselor in every elementary building. Is that correct, Dr. Woodley? Yes. And so absolutely, the plan is, Phase One of the plan is included in this document.
Good, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
So I know you've had a number of different conversations with folks, uh, since January, and so when you get ideas and suggestions of things that cannot be implemented, for whatever reason, how are we hanging on to those ideas or cataloging, so we start from a place of maybe including them in future?
Great question. We actually, um, so for me, I have my 2223 budget folder already started, and, um, we've digitally, just, we're storing those away. These are the things we didn't get to, so that we can come back to them as a start of our conversation. We've, on some of the items that have been brought, we actually have pushed down to, um, our, our middle management tiers and said, "Please start working on these plans. How would we do it? What would it take?" And so those conversations are well underway already.
Any other questions from Ms. Quinley? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Quinley.
Yes.
Is there a motion to, uh, to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the FY2022 Comprehensive Budget?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second of June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez? Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, uh, we're ready to move with the, the Code of Conduct for SY202122. There is no cost attached to this. However, at this time, we will bring Dr. Woodley up to present to the board and the community, uh, what's going to be different about the student code of conduct.
All right. Well, good afternoon, Board Chair Hogan, members of the board. I'm excited to bring the, um, Code of Conduct for our next school year in place. As you guys know, this has been a year-long process of us engaging with all stakeholders through this process of trying to totally transform our student code of conduct. Now, I am excited, most of all, that of the student input that we were able to get to really go hand-in-hand with us, really trying to transform this code of conduct to be what our, um, educators need, as well as what our students need in order for us to move the agenda forward. But we were able to engage with teachers, counselors, um, security officers, every stakeholder that we could, um, engage with, our community members, to really, um, do a deep dive into this work and really look at transforming the code of conduct. Um, the overall code of conduct language, um, we recognized was very punitive, and so we made sure that it was more restorative and more positive language when it was, um, related to the code. We put in a, a learner bill of rights to say what our students' rights were as a, as a result of, um, this work. We looked deeply at our dress code, um, and identified that there was some issues as related to some gender bias or discriminatory practices, so we totally transformed that particular area. When we looked at the classifications, um, we saw that there was a lot of variance in our Class Four classifications, and so we pulled those out and made a Class Five classification to focus on those, um, very, um, the most severe cases that need to be addressed by, uh, the discipline officer. And so make sure that was a distinction when we looked at our classifications. We also, uh, made sure that we put in the trauma-sensitive language and restorative practices language and focus on intervention. So at every level within the code of conduct, there is, for every behavior, there are interventions that are trauma-informed, as well as restorative, to help guide our educators' decisions about how to address, um, behaviors that they are seeing in their, uh, particular schools. Uh, we also removed, uh, suspensions in the, in the areas of Group One, Group Two, and Group Three violations, in the areas of K through Five. Um, K, Groups Five and Group Four behaviors are those more severe behaviors that include harm to self, harm to others, or in violations of law. And those, um, are, um, our educators are able to suspend at those, for those behaviors. Um, and we put in that all interventions must be implemented prior to out-of-school suspension. So we must, at any grade level, make sure interventions are put in place, and the suspension should be used very sparingly in the most extreme situations. And if a student is suspended, we put in a re-integr, integration plan, where that we have to have a reintegration meeting with those students and those families, and work replacement behaviors must be, uh, a plan to teach or replace some behaviors, so we're not seeing chronic misconduct, um, occurring within our schools and with our students. So, um, that's the overview of the code. Um, it's a thick document, so that was a quick overview, but I know you guys have had an opportunity to engage in giving input and reviewing of that code, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you have right now.
Mr. Abarka?
Yeah, I just want to commend you, Dr. Bedell, Nate, Dr. Jones, I think were some of the first, uh, folks to kind of press this, uh, effort. And I know last year, we were in a very different place, so I'm glad that we are here now, looking at this very important work. So thank you to everyone for pressing this.
Well, I want to say that Darren Washington, our discipline officer, led this work, so he had probably about 100 meetings with probably about 1,000 different people. So he has, um, really, and lead, and doing this work during a pandemic. So I mean, I just kudos to, um, to him, to, um, Travanna Alexander, to our restorative justice team, um, all coming together to make sure that this product is what it is, and then, you know, being able to work with the budget department to make sure we're able to get the resources, because it's one thing to do a code of conduct, but not having the supports in place to support our educators and our principals to put this work off, you know, it would be for naught. So I just thank everybody involved, um, for this collaborative process.
Dr. Jones?
I just want, I'm not going to cry today, but I really am just really happy to hear that, um, you all just took this time to really listen, and I know that it was stressful. I know that it was a lot of work, um, but y'all dug into it and really did it, and I see a lot of the feedback that we gave represented in these changes. So, you know, two years ago, I was like, "Nope, I can't vote for that." And today, I'm just really happy to be able to say, "I see that we're walking where we've been talking."
Yes.
I looked at the part about, uh, just something basic, like taking the language about banning hoodies and hats, and having explained to my nine-year-old why he couldn't wear a hoodie, his school hoodie in his school. It was kind of painful to explain that, "Well, that makes people think this," or "This was that," but to just see that y'all took it that step further and even remove that part, like, that is incredible. It sounds basic, but it's incredible. And I also just want to say, like, we talk about enrollment, we talk about people looking at our district as a leader, like, if we talk about academic gains, like, this is how we will get to academic achievement, because you, there is no universe where you can suspend a lot of kids or be overly punitive in your code of conduct and expect excellence academically. And so I think that we will show ourselves to be leaders, um, in this area. So I'm just really, thank you all, every, your whole team, you know, our colleagues who were supportive of this and who really listened. So I'm done. I'm not, I, I survived. I didn't, I didn't crack.
Thank you. Any, uh, Ms. Buckner?
Hi, thank you, um, for presenting this. I just have a quick question about, um, it says K through Five.
Yes.
Is there a reason why it says K through Five and not pre-K through Five?
It is pre-K through Five. We have a separate section that goes over pre-K, um, um, initiatives within our school to code of conduct, but it includes pre-K. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I didn't, I, that, that wasn't, if I didn't say that before.
So to be clear, we are eliminating suspensions for pre-K?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
I will also echo the thanks, because this was a huge undertaking, and I think it actually, I'd look also a little bit to more squared. This is a perfect example of how this process between a public, um, a board, an administration that's open, um, this is how it looks. And the only thing I wanted to add was, this is the beginning of a longer journey.
It is.
And I want to make sure people, you know, in, in this work that we do, we tend to think, "Oh, we've done this, and now it's all going to be different." No, no, let's just remember that we, as a board, have the monitoring part that we have to do. We also have to continue to maintain the supports that will be necessary, because this is a growing program.
Yes.
And what I always want to encourage is that we know it's not going to be perfect out of the gate. Let's keep our heads about ourselves when we, let's look at data, let's ground ourselves in that, and just talk it through and work it through, because this is a, this is a long journey. But I am super excited that we're finally starting it.
Yes, and I thank you so much, um, Board Chair Wolfsee, for saying that, because this is a journey. Um, it is a learning process. We've started the process of getting our staffs trained. We're putting the supports in schools, but it's going to be a coaching cycle that has to to go through, where we have to learn to do things differently. And so we've got to have grace with our educators, and as we're asking them to have grace with our kids, as we work through this new initiative and as we move forth in this process. But we're excited. I'm excited for the feedback that we've received from the schools so far about the trainings that they've received and the process they're going through, and they're excited about the work and the direction that we're going. So thank you.
Dr. Jones?
Just really quickly, I realized in my thanks, I have forgotten to thank More Square, so I just wanted to call them out. I appreciate Mr. Carter and everybody, Dad, who was sending me emails, and Dr. Jones, I need to meet with you, you know? So I just really appreciate that type of engagement, and like my colleague said, this is what it looks like. This is how we get change in our schools for our kids. So thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, the word for me is pride. Like, I feel really proud of what you guys have done here, right? It is, I don't think people can really sort of wrap their heads around how important that these changes are to our kids, right? At a very fundamental level, you're talking about how we think differently about our kids and how we treat them differently than we have historically. And so I'm really proud of the work that you've poured into it, your team has poured into it, Dr. Bedell, and everyone around you who's supported you through it. Super thankful for More Square pushing us and doing it in a respectful and thoughtful way, right? Because some people push, but they don't know how to push, right? More Square knows how to push, and we're here partly as a result of that. And so thank them, and really, I mean, it was Dr. Jones, she was really the impetus, at least from my perspective, for this through questioning the code of conduct a couple of years ago, right? And it got us here, right? It sort of created a sense of urgency amongst all of us to say, okay, guys, we've got to do something about this. And so thank you, Dr. Jones, for your focus in this area and really teaching us all how to lead through that focus. So thank you, and I guess now we'll...
I have a few more questions.
Oh, okay. Ms. Buckner?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just need to get caught up, because a lot of this work was done before me.
No problem.
So I want to ensure that I'm clear.
No problem, and I don't have a problem meeting you one-on-one to kind of let you know everything that we're doing as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So I was looking at the committee list.
Yes.
Can you talk me through teachers, and I saw a few teachers were on the committee?
Yes.
And so when we talk about revamping or rethinking our disciplinary processes, something that is like critical is teacher buy-in.
Yes.
Right? And thinking about the way in which teachers do their job, right?
Yes.
A big part of that is relationship building. So I think this is a two-part question. So in what ways, and this first question may not be for you, but in what ways are we ensuring, like, we do the proactive part of, like, ensuring we're being culturally responsive before we get to this, right?
Yes.
And the second question is, how did, and what other touch points did teachers see this?
Yes, so we have multiple things that we've done. First of all, of course, you've presented on our work with trying to make sure a hundred percent of our teams, school teams, have been receiving the discipline that restores training as we get to a hundred percent throughout the district. We met with every school, every leadership team, and to go over this process of the work that we're going to be doing. We set up trauma teams within every building where teachers and administrators work together to look at their data. We use our equity audits to kind of identify the why behind the work and why we're moving in this direction. So we make sure that every building was touched, every educator has been touched with this information, to make sure that everyone has been informed, and they know that we're here to support them through this journey, and this is not something that's been done, or policy that's been done, without their input and their processes of teaching them throughout to make sure they feel supported through the journey. So I'm excited about this. It was a lot of meetings, a lot of work, but we met with the schools monthly through our trauma teams to kind of look at where they were and what individual buildings need, because we know, we understand that it's not a one-size-fits-all model. Some schools are further along than others, and so we are, you know, we're looking at that. We have our cohort one schools who are ready to go with this work, our cohort two schools who are just beginning to work, and our cohort three schools that's going to need additional support. So we are in the process of being able to lay that out about what that looks like within all of our buildings. But I'll be more than happy to kind of go over that with you in more detail at any time.
And last question, is there a difference between OSS and recovery room? Are they different?
Out-of-school suspensions is...
I'm sorry, ISS. ISS, recovery room.
Yes, it is. And so I can break that information down to you about what that looks like, because ISS is a more punitive process that we're getting away from, because it should be about teaching replacement behaviors, because sitting still in a room, being quiet, and looking at a wall all day is not teaching anybody anything. And so we're in the process of having students understand what that behavior was, what they need to do different, how to advocate for themselves to be able to change behaviors.
The reason why I ask is because I saw in the breakdown, if a student has a cell phone, they may be going to the recovery room. So that's why I ask, is this like, is there a clear difference between ISS and recovery room?
Yes.
And thinking about how we break down the misconception or the...
Yes.
The negative connotation of recovery room.
Yes, and I will take it a step further. I would love for you to go with me to one of our schools that have it implemented, for them to be able to kind of walk you through what it looks like and how a child knows how to go back after they go through the recovery room process of identifying what happened, what was the breakdown within that teacher, how to go back and make it right and be able to go back into the classroom, so we're not having students out of class.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Woodley. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the code of conduct, or code of student conduct handbook for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year?
So moved.
Second. All right, it's been moved, enthusiastically moved. And second of June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, it's been approved.
All right. Well, Dr. Woodley, and your team in the back, and everybody else that was involved in this process, really, from the bottom of my heart, I want to say thank you, and we may be the first in this region, and I don't know, maybe in this state that has taken this bold move to do what we know we needed to do a while ago, so thank you. All right, the next item is, we're asking the board to take action on the renewals of district property liability and workers' compensation insurance policies in the amount of, let me just see, oh, it's right here on the screen, two million, nine hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars.
Any questions? No? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve district property liability and workers' compensation insurance policies with property, educator legal liability, general liability, LEL, automobile, crime, inland, marine, mobile equipment, et cetera?
Why, yes, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second of June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is the approval of the Kelly Services Incorporated. We're asking the board to take action on the two point seven million dollar contract, which provides our substitute services for the upcoming school year.
All right. Any questions? All right. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the fourth amendment with Kelly Services with the term of July one, twenty-twenty-one through June thirty, twenty-twenty-two?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so it's been moved in second of June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, well, with that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Are there any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize extension of four grants from School Smart KC?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second of June. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?